Good evening, everyone. Hello, everyone. Hi. Thank you all for coming, certainly. My name is Anthony Moretti. I'm Mayor Hopkins', Chief of Staff, and it's my privilege this evening to be your Master of Ceremonies. And I welcome you to the 60th inaugural celebration for our elected officials. So 60 is a nice number. This evening, we're going to start things off by asking the Cranston High School West Chamber Orchestra, under director, under the direction of Nancy Richardson, to provide some musical entertainment during the procession. I kindly ask members of the Cranston Police Department Honor Guard, the Cranston Fire Department Honor Guard, to escort members of the processional to the stage. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand. Well done, thank you. I ask the audience to please remain standing for the presentation of colors by the Cranston Police Honor Guard. Honor Guard, please come forward. I have the pleasure of asking some special people to come forward. The grandchildren of Mayor Hopkins and the children of our school committee, our young children of our school committee members and our city council members. If you could please come forward. We have Andy Andehar Jr. If you want to, please come onto the stage on this side, please. We have Cole Barnes. We have Wes Barnes. We have Camilla Bonano. We have Katerina Bonano. If you like, you can feel free to come up. You look beautiful. I think I mentioned Katerina Bonano. We have Kenneth Hopkins III. We have Lily Hopkins. We have Aiden Graziano. We have Liam Graziano. Caleb, I say it wrong. Caleb Maderas. We have Colin Maderas. We have Connor Maderas. Jonathan Ortega. Frank Ritz III. Gabriella Ritz. Grace Ritz. And Chloe Shackelford. Thank you for coming up on stage. Did you guys want to come this way some more? We'll group. See this microphone? We're going to have you gather around right in front of the microphone. Come on, don't be afraid. Everyone, come close. Come on, do you want to come more this way? A little bit this way, this group? Thank you. All right. So we have the flag over here. So if you folks would like to lead it by saying, "I pledge allegiance..."
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Want to hold on just a moment, please? Because we have someone special that's going to sing the National Anthem for us, okay? So why don't you stay onstage for just a moment, okay? With that, we have the pleasure, I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Alexis Kelshaw Sr. at Cranston East to sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?"
Good job. Thank you, Alexis. Now, if you guys want to be very careful, exit the stage the way you came in, please. But watch out, those stairs are a little tricky. I'd like to welcome, by calling upon Father Michael Sisko of St. Mary's Church for the invocation.
It is first my sad duty to inform you that Denise Zanny, the daughter of Assistant City Clerk Rosalva Zanny, is close to death. We ask you now to please pause for a moment of silent prayer for her soul and the comfort of her family. Heavenly Father, tonight, we thank you for the leadership of the men and women of our city, judges, city council members, school committee members, and of course, Mayor Hopkins, who have responded in good conscience to serve the public forum for the good of their fellow citizens. I'm honored to be the pastor of a parish with several such individuals. We ask you now to look upon them all tonight. Bless them with wisdom to always know how to guide your city in accord with your holy will. We ask you to bless them with knowledge so they may know the means to accomplish this great task. We ask you to bless them with patience when dealing with those of differing political viewpoints and give them the grace to find reasonable compromises. And we ask you to bless them with peace, safe in the knowledge that they have used the gifts that you have given them to better help the lives of the good citizens of the city of Cranston. O Lord, in your holy name, we beg you to speak this word. Amen.
Feel free to sit down now. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize the folks here that are on the platform by name, but if you can hold your applause to the end, it might save us some time. First off, obviously, we have Mayor Ken Hopkins. We have Governor Dan McKee. We have General Treasurer James Deosa. Father Sisko, as it was just here. We have Judge O. Roger E. Thompson. We have members-elect of the Cranston City Council. Christopher Bonano, citywide. Richard Campopiano, citywide. Jessica Marino, citywide. Bridgette Graziano, Ward 1. Kristen Heroyan, Ward 2. Andy Andehar, Ward 3. Frank Ritz, Ward 4. Michael Trafficanti, Ward 5. Daniel Ward, Ward 6. We have our school committee members-elect here this evening. Citywide, Anthony Malillo, Ward 1. Keith Cottone, Ward 2. Anna Maderos, Ward 3. Dominic Fusco, Ward 4. Melanie Marquetti, Ward 5. Andrea Suave Nado, Ward 6. We have Catherine Crowley. We're fortunate to have Superintendent Janine Notamassi here this evening to your right. And we very much give a warm welcome to Mayor Frank Pacozzi, a good friend of Mayor Hopkins and the city of Cranston. Certainly, Mayor Charles Lombardi of North Providence. We have Coventry Town Administrator Dan Perillo. As we all know, Dan is the former Director of Administration in the city and will forever be a friend of the city. Lincoln Town Administrator Phil Gould. Other dignitaries in the audience, and I'll mention some names, but I apologize in the event I'm missing anyone. But in no particular order, we have kind of a dual role person in the city of Cranston. We have Senator-elect Todd Patalano, otherwise known as Major Patalano. We have longtime Representative Shaolin Lima. We welcome Senator Hannah Gallo, newly elected, I call him a landslide, but Christopher Paplakis. We have Senator Reed's Rhode Island Director, a great friend of the administration, Chris Alpert. We have Senator David Takoyan. We have Michael Kinch, Cumberland Town Council President. We have Edward Inman III, Rhode Island Secretary of State Emeritus. And certainly, a great friend of Cranston, a resident of Cranston, is Raymond Simone, Chief of Staff, Speaker of the House, Chikachi. Again, I apologize if I'm missing anyone, but I tried asking as many people as possible who was here. Since taking office, the mayor, four years ago, was fortunate to have a governor that has been so good to the city of Cranston. He's become a wonderful friend of the mayor, personally and certainly professionally. And I also have to mention, Governor, we thank you for not only your friendship with Mayor Hopkins, but your administration, the people in your staff, have been so superb in helping out the mayor's administration. And this partnership with the city of Cranston and the state of Rhode Island could not be better without your leadership in the folks in your office. And that sincerely meant. With that, Governor, if you'd like to, please come forward and bring your remarks from the state of Rhode Island.
Well, thank you, Tony. And as a former mayor myself, I know where it happens. It happens right on the local level. And so I am really honored to be invited here tonight, not only to share some words on behalf of the people in the state of Rhode Island to the leadership here in Cranston, but also the mayor has honored me by asking me to swear him in tonight. And so I know how important that is. I mean, this is democracy in action, isn't it? I mean, it is a point in time where the voters have let us know and let you know in Cranston on who's going to lead the charge here to make sure that the city keeps on moving in the right direction, which, under Mayor Hopkins' leadership, it happened. And so I want to also recognize the great family that you have here in front of me and haven't met many of them. I know that not only do us serve, you know, the people who are elected, but your family served with you. And I know that, Ken, they stood by you during all the timeframes, whether you were coaching or whether you were teaching or now as a mayor and a friend that I would, you know, I know that whether we're in office or out of office, a longtime friendship will continue. So I appreciate that. Here with other mayors as well, Mayor Pacozzi, Charlie Lombardi, Mayor Lombardi, Town Manager Dan Perillo, and others, and the reps and the senators that are here to support you tonight, to support Cranston tonight. So I thank you for all, everybody that's standing with me and sitting with up here on the stage here for your leadership and your work to make sure that we move our state forward in a way that I believe that is happening. But the reason it's happening is because of the leadership that's on the stage here with me tonight. And so I really appreciate it. I know that my good friend here, James Deosa, the treasurer and a former mayor himself, is here. And we work every day knowing that the people who sent us to the State House are in the audience tonight. And that was one of the first things I did, Mayor, right? Was get all 39 cities and towns' flags. And they're prominently displayed right at the rotunda of the State House. And when I walk into the State House with people, I point to those flags and I says, "Those are the people that sent us here to work for them and on their behalf." So I know that that's why Cranston is doing so well, is that we are connected in with the leadership in Cranston. And Mayor Hopkins is one of those people that has, that we've shared our goals and he's able to help us meet those and understand that our objectives here is to, we have raised incomes in the families that live in our state. And the mayor's focused on that. Increase our educational outcomes. And the mayor's focused on that as well in working with, not only helping support the schools in the community, but out-of-school strategies that can help move efforts. And the mayor is doing that because we know that if we really work with our families, that good things are going to happen for their children. And also making sure we have good health in the state. I stand here today and reminded of the importance of passionate leadership at both the state, local, and federal level, who will work together to make our state more prosperous. Cranston and Mayor Hopkins have been tremendous partners in helping our administration make the work we do as impactful as it can be. They've worked with us on a road restore program to use $4 million to improve local roads right here in Cranston. All 39 cities and towns are involved. I know Mayor Lombardi's here as well. And we're making sure that we're doing everything to help improve our infrastructure. And when it comes to increasing education outcomes, the teacher and the mayor comes out. And his leadership comes out. And we're helping Rhode Island strive for more. Cranston is getting millions in funding through our flagship Learn 365 RI program to help make resources and opportunities available to the families and the students that live in our community. This will drive home learning, health, and well-being goals and will help set the people on a path to job training and better careers. And it can't happen without city leadership. And Mayor Hopkins exemplifies that very leadership that helps us move forward in the state. We can't have a strong state without strong communities. And you can't have a strong community without your public safety, your fire and your police. And I know how much the mayor values those who serve his community and keep it a safe. I'm proud to have a community like Cranston supporting some of the most important work we're doing in the state and actually leading the state, being an example for the state on many areas. And that's happening because of the leadership of Mayor Hopkins and the team that he has here that he works with each and every day, along with the members of the council and the members of the school committee. I'm excited to continue this partnership in 2025 and beyond. And so on behalf of Rhode Island, I want to congratulate Mayor Hopkins and the city council and the school committee on taking the oath this evening and doing the work that they have done for years. And that is going to continue. So congratulations to each and every one of yous. And Mayor, we'll see you on the basketball court. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Governor. The last time I, every time you see Charlie, Mayor Lombardi out, he dresses impeccably. Neat as a pin. The last time I saw him, I said, "Mayor, I have to say, you dress so well. That suit you have on tonight, it's impeccable. It's beautiful." He said to me, "I own the cleaners. Sometimes people forget to pick up their suits." That's a true story. Well, I would like to introduce Mayor Charles Lombardi for the town of North Providence. But you know, I think Charlie Lombardi is everyone's mayor. So I please bring up Charles Lombardi to bring his greetings to Mayor Hopkins, the city council, and the school committee.
I don't need that. See, this is what I mean. So let me tell you a little story. My wife and I killed ourselves to get here tonight from another affair. And I'm glad I did because when I got here, there was a big surprise. Said, "Oh, by the way, you need to say a few words here tonight." I said, "What? No one told you?" I said, "No." So that being said, get ready. As the outgoing president, by the way, of the League of Cities and Towns, I never knew Ken Hopkins till a few years ago. But it was instant friendship. "Ken, you've become a good friend." But I also must tell you that I haven't met one mayor, manager, or administrator that hasn't fought for what is best for their community. If you've heard this evening, and I want to publicly thank you on behalf of the league. But it was also easy for me to come up and say a few words. My family is from Cranston. My mom was born on Yeoman Avenue off Plainfield Pike. And I can tell you this. We spent every Sunday on Yeoman Avenue as a kid. So it's easy for me to be here, Ken. I feel part of this community, part of my life. And I can only tell you that we, like all of our colleagues here, are as far away as the phone. We have a governor that was a mayor. And you know, once a mayor, always a mayor. Right? But congratulations to all of the school committee members, all of the council members. I think everyone knows what you need to do for what's best for your community. Ken, we love you. We respect you. And as I stated, we're as far away as the phone. Thank you for allowing me and surprising me this evening to say a few words. Thanks. And this guy's buzzing in my ear behind me. By the way, there's a stool if you need it.
Mayor Lombardi was recently, up until a few months ago, he was president for a number of years from the Ryan League of Cities and Towns. Mayor Bob DeSilva from East Providence just showed up. I'm sure he was at Mayor Grabian swearing in. So we had a little competition, some conflict. But we welcome the new president of the Ryan League of Cities and Towns, Mayor DeSilva. So thank you for coming, Mayor. With that, I'll turn this over to the tech people from Cranston High School West. Looking at that, we should not take for granted the wonderful and beautiful city that we live in. I think we're all proud to see something like that. Like to call upon Tracy Nelson, our city clerk, to please read the certificate of election of Mayor Kenneth J. Hopkins.
Dear City Clerk Nelson, we hereby certify and declare the following person was elected at the general election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, in the city of Cranston, to the office as set forth preceding their name and for the term of office herein after stated. Mayor Kenneth J. Hopkins. Vote totals from the November 5th, 2024 general election were certified by the Rhode Island Board of Elections on November 22nd, 2024, and published on November 25th, 2024. Signed Nicholas Lima, Registrar, Director of Elections, on behalf of the Cranston Board of Canvassers.
If I can ask some very special people to come forward, it means, these people mean the world to Mayor Hopkins. Can we please have Kenneth J. Hopkins III please come forward, Lily Hopkins, Jonathan Ortega, and Chloe Schalkeford, the grandchildren of Mayor Hopkins, to join us in the swearing in ceremony of the mayor. With that, with that, I call upon Governor McKee to administer the oath of office to Mayor Hopkins. And Mayor Hopkins to receive the oath of the mayor.
Yeah, this is great. How great it is to have these young kids here with you right now. I'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kenneth J. Hopkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will be true and faithful.
That I will be true and faithful.
Unto and support the Constitution of the United States.
Unto and support the Constitution of the United States.
This state.
This state.
And support the laws and constitution thereof.
And support the laws and constitution thereof.
And the Home Rule Charter.
And the Home Rule Charter.
And the ordinances of the city of Cranston.
The ordinances of the city of Cranston.
And that you will well.
And that I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The office of which you have been elected.
The office of which I have been elected.
Or until another be engaged in your place.
Or until another be engaged in my place.
Until, or until you be legally discharged.
Or until I be legally discharged.
Therefrom so help you God.
Therefrom so help you God.
Congratulations, Mayor.
How beautiful is that to have our future right here participating tonight? Thanks, grandchildren. Love you. Good evening, Father Cisco, my good friend Governor Dan McKee, members of the city council, school committee, my fellow mayors and town managers, general assembly members, honored guests, and my fellow Cranstonians. I extend my best wishes to everyone for a wonderful, safe, and blessed New Year for you and your families. We all have a great deal to look forward to in our wonderful city. Ladies and gentlemen, together, we have made Cranston a better place than it was four years ago. I look forward to making Cranston an even better place to live, work, own a business, and grow a family over my next four years. We are here this evening to begin a new term of office for our local elected officials. In this time-honored civic event, we mark an opportunity for a renewed sense of public service and duty to our oaths in serving the residents of Cranston. For new members taking the oath of office, I extend my congratulations on your election and welcome you to your new role in our city government. For those continuing service, congratulations. Once again, and I commend you for your dedication to our city. With all of you, I look forward to doing great things to improve the quality of life of all of our residents. This is an exciting time for the city of Cranston and one of great optimism. I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to recognize one of our new council members. This person returns to the council chambers this year, where he started 45 years ago in 1979. No one, and I repeat, no one, in the history of Cranston has had a career in public service like our new councilman, our great friend, and our public servant, Mike Traficanti. Traf, we will all benefit by your aged wisdom of your public service and your sense of duty to this city. You are one of Cranston's treasures. We look forward to your continued exemplary service and further contributions to all of us in your beloved city. Welcome back to City Hall, my dear friend. For those who have recently left public office, I thank you for your service and wish you well in your future endeavors. My good friend who I served on the council with and is now our newest state representative, Representative Chris Paploskis, thank you, Chris. And to my daughter in politics, Nicole Ranzouli, thank you so much for your dedication and your support for this party and the people of our city. Thank you. Four years ago, I was so honored and humbled as I stood in the city council chambers where I took my first oath of office as mayor. In the height of the COVID pandemic, we were not able to enjoy the complete spirit of community as we are this evening. Our lives, families, and businesses were drastically affected by that most challenging period in our history. Four years later, we are now fortunate to gather in a traditional ceremony with optimism and looking ahead to serve our city. Cranston today is different in many ways than it was in the early days of 2021. Collectively, we are a healthier society. We now have greater visibility in government with participation through video streaming. We have made critical adjustments in our schools, and we have helped to revitalize local businesses. Proudly, we as a community have grown together. Over the past four years, we have made Cranston a stronger community. Cranston today is much improved in our financial health. We have made progress on many fronts. The days of fund deficits are gone, and we continue to deliver sustainable surpluses. With continued prudent financial management, our city is poised for an even brighter future, both financial and historical. Through significant challenges, I am proud of my administration for executing exemplary financial strategies in much-needed discipline. Looking back, we have tackled many issues for our taxpayers. Cranston's financial posture is much stronger than one we faced upon taking office just four years ago. I am excited to lead as your mayor. I am excited to work with our new city council, our new school committee, our state and federal partners, to continue to keep Cranston moving forward. We need to keep Cranston an affordable city, a city that remains safe, a city that will deliver excellence in public education and municipal services. As we have done over the past three years, I am pleased to report another city surplus for this last fiscal year. For fiscal 2025, we report a budget surplus of over $1.5 million to add to our rainy day fund. For reasons like this, we continue to enjoy high marks from the bond rating agencies who have recently affirmed our AA+ bond rating. Over the past four years, we have replenished our rainy day fund to above state-required levels. We are managing our current fiscal year without a tax increase and without reliance on any of the federal oppa funds. It has not been easy to get there, but is our, but it was our job to do so, and we delivered. Ladies and gentlemen, Cranston is thriving and is fiscally strong. We are now in the process of developing our budget for next year. We are mindful of the needs to provide essential city services that are affordable to the Cranston taxpayers. From all indications, this will be a year of fiscal complexities at the state and federal levels. We must do our best to manage with realistic expectations. Given our financial structure, we again look to local tax dollars as our primary revenue source. I urge the city council to remember that when we engage in budget deliberations. There will be many calls for additional appropriations. We will need to balance those considerations with prudent financial practices. To be clear, I will stand with our taxpayers to ensure an efficient but effective government that meets the public safety, recreational, educational, and infrastructure needs of our great city. As elected officials, we are entrusted to operate city government in doing what is best for our residents. We must balance quality of life and affordability. Partisan motives cannot lead our deliberations. I am sure that we can all agree that those need to be the days of the past. Frankly, over the last two years, our community has lost out on some significant opportunities because of politics and partisanship. With a new city council, let's renew ourselves to working together. Let us find collaborative solutions with a healthy debate of ideas to best address our needs and opportunities for the people that we serve. Last year, we saw continued broad support from taxpayers in meeting the capital needs of our schools, with the approval of another bond issue to complete Eden Park School, in the construction of the new Gladstone Elementary School. With the new Garden City School and investments in other capital projects, our schools will continue to be improved with 21st century education facilities. On the city side, we will continue to fund increasing debt service to pay for these school capital expenditures. This year, as every year, we will review, propose, and debate the appropriate level of local funding for our schools. As mayor, I will continue to support our schools to the maximum level that I believe balances the interests of our children and those of our taxpayers. Good schools are important to the success of Cranston's future. We all aspire to great, high-performing schools. As a career educator, I respect our classroom teachers. And as mayor, I encourage with high hopes the best possible results in our classrooms for our children and our grandchildren. Test scores are not the only measure of success. But in general, investment in education must result in a more high-performing and blue-ribbing schools. We look forward to celebrating greater performance for our kids. In the years ahead, we will continue to expand our commercial and industrial tax base for the benefit of our residential property taxpayers. In part, I look forward to the advancement of projects on Comstock Parkway, the former medium-security prison, and unprecedented projects like the Cranston Print Works redevelopment. My attention and commitment to our business streetscapes will continue. I look forward to the third phase of our successful Knightsville makeover. In the next four years, we will also direct our efforts to other neighborhoods' infrastructure needs. Every day, our public safety personnel provide our city with extraordinary protection and emergency services. My commitment to safe neighborhoods, well-funded first responders, and the safety of our schools and businesses will continue to remain my top priority. Often taken for granted, Often taken for granted, our fire and police personnel are our everyday heroes. On behalf of all citizens, I proudly thank them and recognize their extraordinary professionalism and dedication to our city. Let's take a moment also to recognize the daily efforts of our conscientious employees that humbly keep delivering high-level services for our residents and our businesses. Day in and day out, they are the people that make our city the quality community that we continue to enjoy. This year, we look forward to the reconstruction of the new state-of-the-art Budlong Pool Complex. Our children and families will soon enjoy a modern, safe, and accessible facility for decades to come. In this next term, I am especially committed to our youth and enriched community resources. I want to provide every resident the opportunity to access recreational opportunities and enhanced community services. I ask, where will Cranston be in four years? We will continue to be an award-winning, highly livable, and desirable city. We will continue to be a city of safe neighborhoods. We will continue to be a city of thriving businesses, a city delivering great services, and a city with successful schools. With the focus on responsible growth, Cranston must remain a first-rate suburban community, a community with a range of housing choices, diverse civic opportunities, and a proud quality of life that we must always preserve and enhance. As your mayor, I will defend against efforts to transform us into an urban center built in a social laboratory of non-traditional programs and services. The Cranston we know and love will remain strong and desirable for families, visitors, and businesses. My commitment to keep Cranston affordable and deliver superior services. I will keep Cranston a vibrant, most livable, and connected community for today and for the next generation. That is the legacy that, working together, I will lead over the next four years. I invite all leaders and all citizens to join me in this worthy mission. Together, we can keep Cranston on the right track, to be the community that is the envy of our state, a vibrant community that we all enjoy every single day. Ladies and gentlemen, I love this city. I love the people of this city, and I will continue to serve the city with great passion. I will continue to serve with honesty, transparency, and integrity. I will lead by doing only what is best for the wonderful people that I serve. My message to the businesses and the residents of our city is quite simple. Cranston's future is bright. We are a community of great beauty, great spirit, great opportunity, and great people. God bless our great city and all of our residents, and as always, One Cranston, One Hot Beat. God bless. Thank you.
I reintroduce to you Tracy Nelson, City Clerk, to please read the certification of election of the Cranston School Committee-elect.
Dear City Clerk Nelson, we hereby certify and declare the following persons were elected at the general election on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, in the city of Cranston, to the several offices as set forth preceding their names and for the term of office hereinafter stated. School Committee Citywide, Anthony Malillo. School Committee Ward 1, Keith C. Cottone. School Committee Ward 2, Anna Maderas. School Committee Ward 3, Dominic Frank Fusco Jr. School Committee Ward 4, Melanie Marquetti. School Committee Ward 5, Andrea Suave Nadeau. School Committee Ward 6, Catherine Mary Crowley. Vote totals from the November 5, 2024, general election were certified by the Rhode Island Board of Elections on November 22, 2025, and published on November 25. Oh, I'm sorry, that's November 22, 2024, and published on November 25, 2024. Sign Nicholas Lima on behalf of the Cranston Board of Canvassers.
Thank you, Tracy. I kindly ask the members-elect of the school committee to come forward. Anthony Malillo, Citywide; Keith Cottone, Ward 1; Anna Maderas, Ward 2; Dominic Fusco, Ward 3; Melanie Marquetti, Ward 4; Andrea Suave Nadeau, Ward 5; and Catherine Crowley, Ward 6. Mayor Hopkins is here to administer the oath of office to the Cranston School Committee members.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will be true and faithful unto in support the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
This state
This state.
And support the laws
And support the laws.
In Constitution
In Constitution thereof.
In the Home Rule Charter
In the Home Rule Charter.
In ordinances of the city of Cranston
In ordinances of the city of Cranston.
And that you will well and truly execute the office of which you have been elected or until another be engaged in your place or until you be legally discharged therefrom. So help you God. Congratulations.
I kindly call upon Chairperson Dominic Fusco for his remarks on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Hopkins, Governor McKee, members of the city council, school committee, mayors of and city leaders, General Treasurer Diaz. Thank you. This is truly an honor to speak before you tonight, but I first want to thank my family for all their support. I know I've always not been around, and I've dragged you to a million different places, but your support for me through the years has meant more than I can ever describe, so thank you very much. Next, I must thank my colleagues on the school committee for putting your trust in me to lead this committee in the next two years. I promise to work hard with our outstanding school administration, starting with the best superintendent in Rhode Island, Ms. Janine Madamasi. Thank you very much. Along along with the entire central administration, school administration, and the best teachers in Rhode Island, as well as the mayor's office and city council, I promise to work to ensure that our schools remain strong. It won't be easy. After all, we all heard the news, there's been difficult times ahead, but we must do what we can to ensure that our next generation of leaders are ready for the challenges that lie ahead. Cranston is leading the state in many areas, and most evident is the initiative of updating our infrastructure. As the mayor mentioned, the completion of Garden City School, the final updates that are going to be made to Eden Park, and the building of something that's near and dear to my heart, Gladstone's Elementary School. These initiatives, as well as others coming up, have made Cranston the envy of all other school departments. We must continue this momentum, and I was glad to hear you mention that, Mayor, that we must keep progressing, move our buildings out of the 1950s and into the 21st century. We must continue to be the leader in our educational offerings and continue to strive for excellence. To accomplish this, we must work together. Our students, you need to commit to attending school each day and striving to do your best. Our teachers, keep doing the great things you're doing in the classroom to keep our students interested in learning new and exciting things. Our administrators, you need to ensure our schools continue to be a safe place they are and continue to be an inviting atmosphere for our students. Finally, to our elected leaders at the federal, state, local levels, we must ensure the resources are there to allow this continued growth. I promise to do my best to accomplish these goals. Will you join me? Thank you.
She's getting to be a familiar face, Tracy Nelson. If she can please come up once again to read the certification of election of the Cranston City Council-elect.
Dear City Clerk Nelson, we hereby certify and declare the following persons were elected at the general election on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, in the city of Cranston, to the several offices as set forth preceding their names and for the term of office hereinafter stated. Council Citywide, Jessica M. Marino. Council Citywide, Richard D. Campopiano. Council Citywide, Christopher E. Bonano. Council Ward 1, Bridgette R. Graziano. Council Ward 2, Kristin E. Harroyan. Council Ward 3, Andy M. Anduhar. Council Ward 4, Frank Ritz. Council Ward 5, Michael A. Traficanti. Council Ward 6, Daniel R. Wall. Vote totals from the November 5, 2024, general election were certified by the Rhode Island Board of Elections on November 22, 2024, and published on November 25, 2024. Sign Nicholas J. Lima, registrar, on behalf of the Board of Canvassers.
In order to administer the oath of office to the Cranston City Council-elect, we please welcome Cranston resident First Circuit Judge O. Rogerree Thompson.
First of all, congratulations to all of you, and I'm going to exercise a point of privilege because I have to acknowledge my new councilperson, Bridgette Graziano, who's here with her husband and children, and they throw the best block party in the city. Could you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto and support the Constitution of the United States, this state, and support the laws and Constitution thereof, and the Home Rule Charter, and ordinances of the city of Cranston, and that you will well and truly execute the office on which you have been elected, or until another be engaged in your place, or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God? Congratulations.
At this time, we're going to transition the stage for the first city council meeting for the new council. One more time, I'd like to introduce City Clerk Tracy Nelson to call the meeting of the city council at this time. Tracy?
I now call the 60th inaugural meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. I will now call the roll. Councilwoman Jessica M. Marino
Present.
Councilman Richard D. Campopiano
Present.
Councilman Christopher E. Bonano
Present.
Councilwoman Bridgette R. Graziano
Present.
Councilwoman Kristin E. Harroyan
Present.
Councilman Andy M. Anduhar
Present.
Councilman Frank Ritz
Present.
Councilman Michael A. Traficanti
Present.
Councilman Daniel R. Wall
Here.
I will now call for nominations for council president.
Madam Clerk.
Councilman Wall.
Madam Clerk, I would like to nominate Jessica Marino as council president.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? With no, hearing none, the nominations are now closed. Councilwoman Jessica Marino has been nominated for the office of council president. I will now take the role. Councilwoman Marino
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano
Yes.
Councilman Bonano
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano
Yes.
Councilwoman Harroyan
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar
Yes.
Councilman Ritz
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti
Yes.
Councilman Wall
Yes.
Let the record show that Councilwoman Marino has been duly elected council president by unanimous vote of the Cranston City Council. It is my honor to hand the gavel over to you as council president to proceed over the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tracy, as well. Continuing with the meeting this evening, at this time, we will call for nominations of the office of council vice president.
Council President, I would like to nominate Dan Wall as council vice president.
Are there any nominations for the office of vice president from council members? Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
There being no other nomination this evening for the office of vice president, at this time, the nominations have closed for the office of vice president. The council, oh, the council member, Daniel Wall, has been nominated for the office of council vice president, and at this time, I'll ask the clerk to take a roll call vote on that nomination.
Councilman Campopiano
Yes.
Councilman Bonano
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano
Yes.
Councilwoman Harroyan
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar
Yes.
Councilman Ritz
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall
Yes.
Council President Marino
Yes. Congratulations. Next on the agenda this evening, I will recognize Councilman Wall, who will state the Democratic Majority Leader.
We, the Democratic members of the Cranston City Council, have selected a distinguished community member to serve as Majority Leader during the 2025 community member to serve as Majority Leader during the 2025-2026 term. We have chosen as our Majority Leader Kristin Harroyan.
At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Christopher Bonano, who will state the Minority Leader.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Republican Members of the Cranston City Council have selected a distinguished community leader to serve in the capacity of Minority Leader for the 2025-2026 city council term, and that person is Councilman Richard D. Campopiano.
At this time, I want to thank Councilman Minority Leader, Mr. Campopiano, for stepping up, Councilwoman Harroyan as well, and again, congrats to Council Vice President, Mr. Wall. This evening, I would like to thank not just my colleagues, but many others for the privilege of serving the residents of Cranston and for serving, once again, as council president. Before I go further with respect to my appreciation, I would like to extend acknowledgement and welcome to the governor this evening, who was kind enough to participate in the events this evening, the mayor, and congratulate him on his win once again, other state dignitaries, judges this evening in attendance, and other members of the General Assembly, senators and representatives that joined us this evening. I also would like to thank the superintendent, the volunteers, and those who spent many a time helping with this evening's ceremonies, school committee members, congratulate them as well, and acknowledge the assistance and help, once again, of our local police and fire, honor guards, and other representatives from those departments and city department heads this evening. Special thanks I do want to give to my family and my friends, and I'm sure every one of us extends those as well to our own. Two years ago, I had the privilege of unanimously being elected by my council colleagues at that time as the first female council president. I began my remarks that evening with appreciation and gratitude to my family. The same holds true today. I could not take on the responsibility of serving the public as a citywide council person and as the city council president without the love and support of my family. The sacrifice that I make in serving the public, in addition to my other life responsibilities, my career as an attorney as well, would not be possible without their support and encouragement. My husband, our two boys, my parents, they sacrifice a lot, and I am grateful for your willingness to share me with others and to share your time with us. I also want to express my gratitude to my family that's no longer with us, and that being my grandparents. Some of you know the story from conversations, some of you know the story from the last inauguration, but it was the fortitude and strength of my grandparents to come to America from Italy with their young children, leaving everything behind in search of the American dream, not just for them, but for the generations thereafter, and I will forever, forever be grateful to them for that. With respect to my council colleagues, I do have to extend my gratitude to you and appreciation for, once again, instilling your confidence in my leadership as our council president. For those who I've served with before, they know that I am a person of my word, that I truly value honesty, integrity, transparency, and collaboration as we work together to best serve our community. That essential collaboration is not only with each other as colleagues, but it also includes the mayor, it includes state partners, and it includes the greater community at large, most importantly, the residents that we serve. As we engage in our term, we will have conversations in our collaborations with one another, we will be reminded of the fact that we do have more in common than not. We also should be reminded that as for our differences, it is how we handle those differences that is what truly matters, how we maintain a mutual respect for one another as we work together on compromise. We will have opportunities to put our best foot forward for the greater good. I believe that we do share many a common goal, such as fiscal responsibility, public safety, 21st century learning, just to name a few. I look forward to the hard work in the term ahead to help ensure that Cranston continues moving in the right direction to enhance the city that we call home. While it is sad for me to say, I do think it's essential that I acknowledge that we're living in a time that sometimes feels like we're taking 10 steps back. I want everyone to know in this room and beyond, as obvious as it may seem, even I give myself this reminder, if we all want better, then we need to take responsibility in doing better. We all have a part in that. We should always behave in ways that we, as conscientious parents, would expect from our own children. We need to practice what we preach. We need to spend more time being thoughtful and taking pause. Disagreement, when done right, is healthy, and it's absolutely normal and essential in a civilized and prosperous society. What is not healthy and should not be tolerable is exhibiting hostility with insults or violence. Many of us here already know this truth, and yet, I also believe that many of us here know that it bears repeating this evening. I hope that the city of Cranston can continue with its executive and legislative branch serving as an example of what should be the norm. I invite all of us here to take part in that effort. We should refuse to accept the notion that the word "differences" is to be synonymous with what is wrong in this world. We will be that collaborative, respectful council and community together, with all of us taking part, exemplifying how our differences make us stronger together. And I hope that we will be able to do this together, that we take that commitment so that we can accomplish the goal of what is best for the greater good. Next this evening, we have as the next order of business, the appointment of the city council legal counsel. Council Vice President Wall.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Stephen Angel as city council legal counsel.
I would like to second that.
Any discussion from council members? At this time, may the clerk please take the roll.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Bonano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall.
Yes.
Council President Marino.
Yes. At this time, if Attorney Angel could come to the stage and take the oath. You do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto and support the Constitution of the United States, this state, and support the laws and constitution thereof, and the Home Rule Charter and ordinances of the city of Cranston, and that you will well and truly execute the office of which you have been appointed, or until another be engaged in your place, or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, congratulations. Best of luck. Next order of business, we have the appointment of municipal judges. Council Vice President Wall.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to take all judicial appointments as a block. This will include Chief Judge, Associate Judges, Auxiliary Judges, and the Probate Judge.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion from council members? There being none, please take the roll.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Bonano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall.
Yes.
Council President Marino.
Council Vice President Wall.
I would like to nominate the Honorable Raymond Coia as Chief Judge, the Honorable Michael Forte Jr. as Senior Associate Judge, the Honorable Angeline Cooper as Associate Judge, the Honorable Susan Pires as Associate Judge, the Honorable Emily Vizery as Associate Judge, the Honorable Robert Augusta as Auxiliary Judge, the Honorable Kenneth Schreiber as Auxiliary Judge, and the Honorable Cynthia Fogarty as Probate Judge.
I would like to second those.
Thank you. Any discussion from council members? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Bonano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall.
Yes.
Council President Marino.
Yes. Congratulations. You will join us on stage.
Could you all please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto and support the Constitution of the United States, this state, and support the laws and constitution thereof, and the Home Rule Charter and ordinances of the city of Cranston, and that you will well and truly execute the office of which you have been appointed, or until another be engaged in your place, or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God? Congratulations.
Next on the agenda this evening, I will recognize Councilman Wall, who will state the Democratic Majority Leader. We, the Democratic Members of the Cranston City Council, have selected a distinguished community member to serve as Majority Leader during the 2025-2026 term. We have chosen as our Majority Leader Kristin Harroyan. Congratulations. At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Christopher Bonano, who will state the Minority Leader.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Republican Members of the Cranston City Council have selected a distinguished community leader to serve in the capacity of Minority Leader for the 2025-2026 city council term, and that person is Councilman Richard D. Campopiano.
At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Christopher Bonano, who will state the Minority Leader. Congratulations. Next order of business, we have the appointment of the Municipal Court Clerk. Council Vice President Wall.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Miranda Batello as Municipal Court Clerk.
I would like to second that.
Any discussion from council members? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Bonano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall.
Yes.
Council President Marino.
Yes. Congratulations, Attorney Angel. At this time, if Attorney Angel could come to the stage and take the oath. You do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto and support the Constitution of the United States, this state, and support the laws and constitution thereof, and the Home Rule Charter and ordinances of the city of Cranston, and that you will well and truly execute the oath of office which you have been appointed, or until another be engaged in your place, or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. Next order of business this evening, we have the appointment of Council Auditor Budget Analyst. Recognize Council Vice President Wall.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate David DeMaio as City Council Auditor Budget Analyst.
I would like to second that.
Any discussion from council members? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Bonano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
them for that. With respect to my council colleagues, I do have to extend my gratitude to you and appreciation for, once again, instilling your confidence in my leadership as our council president. For those who I've served with before, they know that I am a person of my word, that I truly value honesty, integrity, transparency, and collaboration, as we work together to best serve our community. That essential collaboration is not only with each other as colleagues, but it also includes the mayor, it includes state partners, and it includes the greater community at large, most importantly, the residents that we serve. As we engage in our term, we will have conversations in our collaborations with one another, we will be reminded of the fact that we do have more in common than not. We also should be reminded that as for our differences, it is how we handle those differences that is what truly matters, how we maintain a mutual respect for one another as we work together on compromise. We will have opportunities to put our best foot forward for the greater good. I believe that we do share many a common goal, such as fiscal responsibility, public safety, 21st century learning, just to name a few. I look forward to the hard work in the term ahead to help ensure that Cranston continues moving in the right direction to enhance the city that we call home. While it is sad for me to say, I do think it's essential that I acknowledge that we're living in a time that sometimes feels like we're taking 10 steps back. I want everyone to know in this room and beyond, as obvious as it may seem, even I give myself this reminder, if we all want better, then we need to take responsibility in doing better. We all have a part in that. We should always behave in ways that we, as conscientious parents, would expect from our own children. We need to practice what we preach. We need to spend more time being thoughtful and taking pause. Disagreement, when done right, is healthy, and it's absolutely normal and essential in a civilized and prosperous society. What is not healthy and should not be tolerable is exhibiting hostility with insults or violence. Many of us here already know this truth, and yet, I also believe that many of us here know that it bears repeating this evening. I hope that the City of Cranston can continue with its executive and legislative branch serving as an example of what should be the norm. I invite all of us here to take part in that effort. We should refuse to accept the notion that the word "differences" is to be synonymous with what is wrong in this world. We will be that collaborative, respectful council and community together, with all of us taking part, exemplifying how our differences make us stronger together. And I hope that we will be able to do this together, that we take that commitment so that we can accomplish the goal of what is best for the greater good. Thank you. Next this evening, we have, as the next order of business, the appointment of the city council legal counsel. Council vice president Wall.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Stephen Angel as city council legal counsel.